Call to order, the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for March 17th, 2016. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice for all. As a unit of the party of the state of New Mexico, as a symbol of brotherhood friendship among the United Citizens.
Madam Manager, do any changes need to come on the agenda?
Yes, sir. We need to remove item I, "Disapprove Grant County Detention Center Policies and Procedures", request for leave policy. I thought that the union was happy with the policy, we had met with them before putting it on the agenda, and we've since learned that they're not happy with the policy, so I would like to remove it, and we'll continue to work with them and find out what their issue is.
Okay. Anything else? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda's amended?
Motion to approve that amendment.
Second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So at this time, the commission will stand for public input. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Morning. My name's Frank Biafelt. I don't know if this is on.
Push the button down. Is it red now?
Yeah. Thank you. My name's Frank Biafelt, I represent Southern Residence in Wind Canyon Estates regarding our road project along Fleming Tank and Wind Canyon Drive. I want to thank Anthony Gutierrez, who has been a big help in this process, and I've worked at Ray's Steel before. I understand because of Ray's absence, or Anthony's absence, in moving on to another position, that position is vacated. We're hoping that this does not delay the process in our going forward on our project. Again, I've talked to Commissioner Hall, and they've been very supportive, but we just wanted to bring that forward to you. Thank you.
I can tell you, we're gonna try to do everything we can in Anthony's absence, but it is an absence, and it's somebody that was here a long time, and...
Yeah, he was instrumental in taking this to the point where we're at now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your attendance and your interest.
Further public input. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name for the record.
This work okay?
It does. You might pull the mic down just a little bit. There you go.
Okay. My name is Linda Patford, and good morning to Mr. Caston, Mr. Hall, officials, and staff. I wish to address the GCDC Oversight Resolution. I have been told that after Mrs. Webb's recommendation to disapprove this resolution, it is a done deal. I hope that is not the case. This recommendation came as a total surprise. We thought it had been received with approval, and we had no notice that this would be brought before you today. I also wish to speak to a couple of remarks I heard that Mrs. Webb made, as I wasn't here that Tuesday. One was that Grant County doesn't need more committees. In fact, you need as many committees as you need. I have no idea how many committees and commissions there are, because they are not listed on the website, but I know there is one for the shooting range, and there is not one, although there used to be, for the detention center. She also suggested there is review by the New Mexico Association of Counties. If so, when do they visit GCDC? Do they review resident grievances? I understand Mr. Correa works with them to develop policy, but that is a completely different function. Oversight is the responsibility of Grant County Commission, and you currently receive administrative reports from Mr. Correa and visit there yourselves once a year, which I understand you will be doing today. This has proved to be inadequate. The material supplied to you included an extensive list of grievances over time. If you review that list, you will see several issues frequently repeated by multiple persons. Clearly, the GCDC administration is having trouble addressing these issues on its own. I use the term "persons" and not "inmates," because we need to remember who we are talking about and dismissing as unworthy of oversight on their keepers. First, these are real people with real human rights. These are United States citizens. Second, as you know, GCDC is a temporary holding facility for people accused, mostly, and not yet convicted. While even the convicted have rights and cannot be ignored, most of the GCDC residents are still pending court hearings. Many of the complaints center around the inability to defend themselves as intercommunication and mail to their attorneys or the courts, or access to the law library. Imagine yourself somehow swept up and put in jail with no way to deal with your own defense, your medical issues, or even contact your loved ones. Thirdly, some of these real people have real medical needs that are difficult for such a facility, kind of a warehouse system, to manage. These are real lawsuits waiting to happen. Some of these real people suffer from mental illness. As our system provides little service to such, to this population, they often wind up in our detention centers. Mr. Correa freely admits he needs help to provide the medical care they need and to help keep them from returning. Finally, many complaints about the contracted food service. Again, there is not much Mr. Correa can do on his own to ensure their contractual compliance. Of course, any institution will have complaints, but the number of repeated issues suggests that GCDC staff is having difficulty addressing them. Add to this the occasional need for medically necessary special diets, and again, you get the potential for lawsuits. An oversight committee has more than one function. Yes, they receive and review complaints, but they also look for solutions. Our ACLU members have volunteered their time to try to address these issues, but we cannot do more than document them. Real solutions require a community effort. You bring that community together in a committee comprised of the various disciplines available. The ACLU cannot and should not be that oversight body. This commission is failing its responsibility to its citizens that are in its custody. Either you, as commissioners, take a more active role in talking to these people more often, research their complaints, and search for solutions, or you establish a committee to do that for you. What we are suggesting here is that you establish a problem-solving body before there is a tragedy that results in a lawsuit against the county that will cost far more than any expense associated with the committee. Thank you.
Further public input. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Steve London, and I'm a member of the Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department. I've been a member of the department for 10 years, and besides my firefighting responsibilities, I do some of the purchasing for the department. First of all, I want to thank the county commissioners for their consideration today of our new fire station, which will serve the Hanover, Fiero, and Venadium community. However, I'm speaking now about the new process that makes simple purchases at Walmart difficult. My purchases at Walmart are primarily basic food and water necessary for firefighters when they're responding to incidents. It consists of water, power bars, jerky, very basic things needed by firefighters when they're at an incident. There's nothing that could be considered extravagant or questionable about these purchases. In the past, I've been able to select the items the department needed at Walmart and use a county procurement card to pay for them. At the beginning of the following month, I submit documentation to the county to account for these purchases, and as far as I know, in the 10 years I've been doing this, I have never been delinquent. I can no longer use this simple process for Walmart purchases. The new process, shown on this county memo, requires that I first go to Walmart and get today's prices for the items required, fill out a purchase requisition, locate my department chief to sign the requisition, turn the requisition into Jacob Zamora, wait some number of days for Jacob to approve the requisition and issue a purchase order number. Then I have to return to Jacob's office to obtain the Walmart community card and hope he is there and the card is there when I go, purchase the items at Walmart, hoping the prices haven't changed since I started this process, and then return the Walmart community card to Jacob. I live a half hour out of town, and this will require I make three trips to town to make a simple purchase. What happens during a weekend fire spanning several days when we run, when our firefighters run out of these basic items needed for their welfare? Frankly, could you have made the process more onerous? Walmart does not require a purchase order to be used with the Walmart community card. This was a requirement invented by Grant County. I urge you to direct the county manager to simplify the process for making simple and necessary purchases at Walmart. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members?
I would just like to, you know, once in a while, we need to, you know, acknowledge these human beings, and I play with these guys, they're the 60-year-old boomers. They're actually going to a championship called the Tournament of Champions in Florida in February 2017. They're the 60-year-old boomers. I play ball with them on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're just a wonderful bunch, and I just wanted to acknowledge their success on how they got up there. A gentleman by the name of Bill French, he's actually, coaches the 60-year-old boomers. Bobby Ruiz is actually the manager, and it's wonderful to spend a lot of time with these guys, even though I'm not 60. There's a gentleman by the name of Dean Barrop, Victor Nanyas, and John Hauserman. Uncle Johnny. I would just like to acknowledge them, and I, we spoke this last Tuesday, and we're having a little bit of fundraisers to get them over to Florida, but I just want to acknowledge them. They're a great bunch of guys, and I hope they can, they can take it this next year. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Hey, thanks. That was ours.
Further public input. Seeing none, we'll move on. We're going to stand now for a public hearing for consideration of ordinance number 1603. We're gonna have a discussion regarding the adoption of ordinance O-1603 entitled "Amending the Dedication of a Capital," or, excuse me, a County Local Option versus Seat Tax." This will be the second time we did it, because we found where we did not properly... Go ahead.
We just didn't follow the motion process.
We were a day or two off, so we've decided to do it again.
Yes, that's exactly the same.
I know that there's been some questions. The reason that we are doing this is because after, two years ago with the, when the sole community provider system went away at the state level through Medicare/Medicaid, we are now no longer needing that money to make those matches. However, we are needing that money for something dear to some of these people's heart, for the medical at the detention center. However, they're not considered indigent, so we can't use it unless we take this off. There's also a couple, a couple of other things with Cory Caminos and stuff that have been line item for that thing, for that, those monies, but... So at this time, we will stand for discussion regarding the adoption of ordinance O-1603. One more time, any of you want to talk about it? Okay. We'll close the hearing. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve or disapprove O-1603.
Sure. Make a motion to approve ordinance number 01603.
I second that motion. There's a motion and a second to approve O-1603. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Minutes. Approve or disapprove February 18th, 2016 regular meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the February 18th, 2016 regular meetings.
Minutes. I second that motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the February 18th regular meeting minutes. Seeing discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Approve or disapprove the March 14th, 2016 expenditure report? Linda, would you go over that for the audience, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. We have an expenditure report to be approved for a total sum of $1,578,011.14. And included in here is a total of AP checks of $1,155,801.34. This includes a check to Bank of America for $57,617.96, and this is for debt service payments for the GeoBond 2014 series and the detention center GeoBonds. And there's a check to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $12,639.32, and this is for 2016-2017 financial package operations, maintenance, and updates. A check to Creative Products or Seating, these are for tire supplies, in the amount of $11,249.48. A check to ECS Electrical and Construction Specialists, and this is for a rotating beacon for the airport, and this is for $12,800. A check to JNS Plumbing and Heating, this is for water line improvements on Rosedale Road, for a total of $36,060.39. A check to Bank of America for a E1 pump payment on a purchase agreement for Fort Baird Fire Department, and this is for $30,165.78. A check to Ride Express Fleet Services, and this is for the January fuel charges, for the amount of $17,341.77. And then we have a total of payroll checks of $422,209.80, and this includes pay period number four and pay period number five.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
To approve the March 14th, 2016 expenditure report.
And I'll second that motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the March 14th, 2016 expenditure report. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. Can you have an overview of the Cameron Creek Prescribed Burn on the Silver City District? Diane Telfaro is here, so I'll turn the floor over to you. Can we get some lights, Denisha?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and Board members. Thank you for allowing us to come to your meeting, the day I see you have a very busy agenda. And we would like to make a presentation on the Cameron Creek Prescribed Burn, which we're slated to do in April, probably second or third week of April. I have two of my district staff here, Liam Trujillo and Jesse Searls, who will give a quick presentation of PowerPoint over here, and we have a Mac, and then we'll open it up for questions.
I'm Jesse Searls, and on this burn, I'll be the burn boss training, and that's kind of, I guess, the main person in charge of the burn operations and getting with the plans and the pre-work. So, let's start. Basically, the burn is going to be in the Fort Baird management area, which is a game management area that the Game of Fish kind of has there, and so they're helping us burn that project, and also, so that's one of the main goals, is to improve wildlife habitat, improve the elk and deer habitat out there, there's a lot of youth hunts, and it's a highly used area for hunting. Then I just want to go over some of the pre-burn considerations, just let you know the planning that goes in behind this. It's not just, we don't just go out there and burn, there's a lot of procedures and planning that goes on. And then some of those include the NEPA process, which, that would get reports from specialists throughout Forest Service as far as archaeology, wildlife, watershed, and then that NEPA process also includes public comments. So, that process is done on the burn area, and then we have a burn plan, which that's, includes a comprehensive prescription, you know, the resources that we need, the weather conditions, and then that plan goes through a technical review by somebody who's qualified as a burn boss, and then also is approved by our agency administrator on the forest. Some other stuff, unit prep, so when we're gonna burn, we have the benefit compared to wildfires, we have time out in front to go out there and prep the boundaries, the holding boundaries, and stuff like archaeological sites. So, just, for example, on this burn, we, we went around the whole perimeter and removed ladder fuels, and removed concentrations of fuels near the boundary that could cause problems, and also through that NEPA process, some watershed areas were identified that they didn't want to burn, so we've excluded those areas, primarily the cottonwood stands in Cameron Creek there. So, we have the benefit of going in there and planning everything and taking care of some problems before they may happen. Agreement with Grant County, so we've been working with Randy Villa to get some of the VFDs from the county to help us, and then also to provide training for them through the ITCS system, so they can start kind of working on engine boss type calls through that national side. And it's been good working with him, and I think Tyrone and Fort Baird and Whiskey Creek might be helping us out on that. So we have an agreement in place for that to happen. Closure order. Due to the location of this burn, and the proximity of town, and how used the big tree area is, big tree trailhead, we're gonna have a closure order just for public and firefighter safety, so we don't run into them in the burn, and they're not interfering with our operations, and we don't expect that to last more than a week, or somewhere in around there. Notifications, kind of like what we're doing here today, but we've also had one public meeting for the public to come and get their questions answered, and also we're having one tonight at the Armory in Fort, or in Santa Clara there, at 6 o'clock. So we do that, and then we have a press, we send out press releases through one of the Forest Service employees, she puts the information on the website and our Facebook page, and also, we're gonna have signs out there for the burn, as far as the closure, where it's at, the smoke. And then so, some other considerations we take into account is the air quality and smoke. So our burns have to be registered through the New Mexico Air Quality Board, and so we have to register it every year, and then we have to give them notifications prior to burning, and that also puts some stipulations on us as far as smoke, as far as ventilation category. And also in our burn plan, where we have that prescription, we have excluded to burn with north or northeast winds due to the hospital and the community there in Santa Clara. And also, we're gonna put up some smoke monitors at the hospital there, and probably one in Movers Valley, so we can monitor the actual smoke impact. So cooperators, like I talked about, this, this project is primarily funded through the Game of Fish, so working with them, they're helping fund this project for wildlife habitat improvement, and then also we have that agreement with the VFDs through Randy Villa, where we're gonna try to utilize them and help us with the burn, and also get them some And then just some of the things that take place post-burn. So we've set up photo plots for before and after photos. We're gonna, we'll monitor the results as far as if we're meeting our prescription, as far as reduction in fuels and things like that. And then, you know, there's a lot of trails out there, so we will check the trail system, and the fence is also out there, and anything that needs a little bit of fixing, possibly due to the burn, we'll, we'll go in there and repair that. And then also, we'll monitor the archaeological sites. That's something that we, as far as the prep, we prepped all the archaeological sites, and so we'll go back in there and make sure no damage is done to them. The next few are just some pictures, kind of current conditions out there, so what we have going on out there is some Pinon juniper encroachment, and I don't have the historical photos, but if you look at historical photos, it's, it's a lot, west junipers out there, a lot more open, and so that's one of the primary goals, is to knock back that PJ encroachment and restore it to more of a metal-like area, improve the grass and the forage for the wildlife. And then here's another, it might be hard to see, but this is showing some like mountain mahogany oak species. They're very decadent, where they're tall, and it's hard for the animals to get to the new, new growth, which is the primary, or where the primary nutrition is from them, so hoping to knock them back a little bit and get some regeneration where it'll be more available for wildlife. So I'll go over the goals real quick, and so everything we do with the firefighting, number one goal is firefighter and public safety. So that's our main goal, and then, like I said, to control the invasion of woody shrubs and trees into natural openings, grasslands and meadows, improve wildlife habitat, improve the Cameron Creek watershed, reintroduce fire into the ecosystem, and by doing that, we're hoping to reduce the risk of extreme fire, so if we do get a fire in there, if we already went in and reduced some of those fuels through this burn, it's not gonna be as severe, and so it'll be easier to control. And then also protect the red burning areas, like I talked about, we're, we're excluding the majority of the cottonwood areas. And then this here is just a little, this is a map of where the burn is. It's out there behind the old Fort Baird Hospital by the big tree trailhead, and you can see on this map, or Santa Clara, Silver City, and the main highways, and so it is fairly close to town, and that's why we're trying to make a big effort to get out the, get the information out. And so this is the proposed closure that we have, and it's, the hashed area is gonna, is an area closure, closure, and the area, red dots are trail closures and road closures. But one thing you can see from this is we made an effort to keep the dragonfly area open, and there's still, so we'll have recreation opportunities there, and then also little walnut and areas like that are still very close, so I don't, I think it'll be an impact but minimal, and they'll still have opportunities for recreation. And then something else that we might be using on this burn is some aerial ignition, and this is a picture of a heli-torch. So it's like a big drip torch, basically, that hangs from the helicopter, and that's , so, and the reason we're looking at doing that is, I guess I didn't clarify the size earlier, but it's like 2,000 acres, so it'll, it's, we can get it done faster and with less people on the ground, and so less exposure if we can use this equipment, and it will help us get the desired effect as far as reducing some of the PJ, because it will help us burn hot in some of those areas to kill some of the PJ. And this, in the, in the background on that ridge, this was the avalanche burn in 2003, and you can kind of see where there's some openings, and so that, you know, we're hoping to open some meadows up like that burned it, and I don't know if you guys remember this burn, 2011, the range fire started at the shooting range. This is off 152 here, and I'm actually driving the engine, and one of my seasonals is there, but this is, this is kind of maybe what we'll be looking at, similar fuels, similar time of year, I think, I believe this fire was in April. So this is possibly what we're looking at as far as, you know, what might be happening out there. And here is just a couple pictures of the results, so you can see at least that one, PJ right there was killed, and some up on the ridge, and then same thing here, just showing some, a little bit of mortality in these smaller trees, opening it up a little bit. So that, that's similar to the results we're looking for from this burn. And then with that, I guess, does anybody have any questions or anything that I can answer?
Lights, please.
And then also I have this map, if you guys want me to point anything out of the burn perimeter there.
Are you gonna leave that with us?
Uh, I can, I can print another one, so if you have any...
Commissioner?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for the comments to the commission, and then also the other media, to the media that you're gonna be doing, and then the meetings that you're gonna have, because, you know, most of us that lived here, anytime, anytime we smell that smoke, you're gonna smell it before you see it, depending where you live, and such, and then you don't know, you all of a sudden start having these concerns and such. One of the concerns that, you know, I still have is that, a time of year in Grant County, I, I'm not a weather person, but the changing of, of wind and such, and the velocity of the wind is always a concern too, because of some past problems that we've had, not necessarily here, but other places in the state. And so I would imagine that if in fact the winds aren't, the directions aren't right, or maybe the velocity increases, you guys will shut it down, and...
Yeah, and we work with the Weather Service in El Paso, so we do have those restrictions, like in the burn plan, you know, you cannot burn with wind over like fifteen, 15 miles an hour, and then certain RHs and certain temperatures, and we do work with the Weather Service to get the... And we do work with the Weather Service to get the forecasts as accurate as we can. And then we do have those wind restrictions as far as direction. So and predominantly, you know, we have a southwest wind here, which in this, where this burn is, that's what we want and that's good. So, but we do work with the El Paso Weather Service a lot and then if we don't have the conditions, we just don't burn. And if we can't get the burn done due to not coming into prescription or wildfires happening or, I mean, that's happened before too, or if there's too much other stuff going on, then this, this will be put off for another year or however it may be. But it does have to meet certain prescriptions and weather. And then if we go outside of those parameters and can't burn...
And what kind of duration are we talking about as far as this area being closed and/or the burn, if and when it starts?
So for the operations side, I would, we're thinking two to three days of burning with the hand ignition and then probably one day with the helicopter. And we were thinking maybe a week on the closure, I don't know, we don't know if that any better information, but...
A week.
Approximately a week is what we're thinking. And it's, and like I said, dragonfly will be open and we have a little walnut and stuff.
There's a lot of people enjoy hiking out there and such, it's a fun area.
This one's definitely a little, a lot more public involvement.
Yes.
And visual, visual from town.
It's like a good plan, I appreciate your time.
Any other questions?
Did I miss the dates on that?
Oh, sorry. So we're thinking the, like April 11th or 18th, those weeks, but we could go through eight...
11th through the 18th?
One of those two weeks is what we're shooting for, but that's also, like I said, depending on whether other, other people burning on forests and availability of resources. And then also, just to make a point of how I talked about other fires, attempting to burn, what was that, 2011, the Quill Ridge, we had a plan to burn at the same timeframe in the Borough Mounds and, you know, due to that fire, that was shut down. So stuff like that, it definitely, we're not gonna spread like the resources too thin and, like I said, we have to have meet certain minimum resources on the burn plan and weather conditions.
Can somebody answer why we choose to burn in the spring rather than the fall? Is it too wet? You don't get the correct...
For the PJ, that's the thing, like usually PJ fuels, we try to burn in the spring because in the fall, it's too wet and then, so that's where we try to burn the stuff in the ponder subprime where we have a little bit of moisture or the fuel moistures are higher and so we can not burn, it's so hot up there. And kind of in the PJ, you need it hot to reduce some of that encroachment. And the grasses in the, yeah, in the fall are not as able to burn.
And you're, you're gonna have enough resources if it does get away from you, you're going to be able to handle it?
So yeah, that's, we have a minimum resources and we're gonna have more than that on site as far as burn plan and then also another part of that burn plan is contingency resources. And so we use a model, it's called BEHAVE, that gives us like a worst case scenario rate of spread change per hour. And then we, we use that information and then we use the information of line construction rates for resources. So we have to have enough resources between the people there and contingency that our production rate outpaces the, the model's spread rate so that we can catch it. So that's part of burn plan too, having the resources there and then also contingency resources available with, you know, one to two hours. And so all that will be...
I'd live directly east of that, so. Right there at Humboldt, so let's not make any errors.
So I just wanted to add, you know, contingency resources, of course, is on lots of people's minds. The forest was burning up north on Hamado and Silver City has a prescribed burn and so does Blackberry. So we, we look at what we're trying to do across the forest and what resources are available. Silver City just has brought on our hot shot crew, so we have the hot shots, we have our engines, we have the LM, we have the Long-Term Fire Department. Now, we look at the big picture and like when Quill Ridge came here, you know, we shut down our burning operations, we didn't burn. So it's on our minds and we would make sure we had contingencies available before we even started the burn.
Okay. Thank you very much, any other questions?
Appreciate your information. Paul McGenus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, collaboration efforts on the Hila National Forest, we have Adam Mendonza.
Mr. Chairman, board members, thanks for giving me a little time. I'm Adam Mendonza, I'm the forest supervisor here on the Hila. So just really quickly, related to the burn, I'm, I really care that we keep it where it should be, so we're gonna make all the efforts we can. So since I arrived on the Hila, which was July of last year, I've just been evaluating our, our work, the things that we've been trying to accomplish where we have some focus. One of the things that I'm really interested in is management of our landscapes. And so they touched with this burn on reducing pineon and juniper encroachment. It's just one example where we have a lot of work to do as an agency, as a forest. And so I wanted to just give you all a heads up that one of my interests, because I think we need to treat the landscape, is to really work with collaboratively with folks and try to push how much treatment we do per year. And so I've been talking to my folks and I've given them direction that we wanna make a concerted effort to actually come out, engage partners, try to chase more money and get more work done. And specifically, it may affect some of the working groups we have in the community. And so I wanna engage and continue to work with the groups we have now, but we're liable to see another group form up due to what I'm directing my folks to do. And so specifically, what I like to do with this effort though is chase things like our collaborative forest restoration project grants. So those grants offer $360,000 over a four-year period to get work done. I want us to be more competitive as a forest and as a community. And so you all are just gonna see the efforts, one of the things I wanna commit to though as we do this is to keep you all involved. We're a partner in this, we both share the lands that the Forest Service manages and it directly affects the community that we all live in. And so just wanna show you, we'll continue to engage you, but you're gonna see some efforts here. And so I just wanted to give you that heads up, specifically as an example, one of the the groups that is formed, one of the commissioners sits on, it's the watershed group, here you go watershed. And so I don't wanna detract from what that group is doing, I just wanna add to it. So that's my intent and my efforts. And so I just wanted to start off by giving you all a heads up. We'll continue to move forward, it'll be a slow effort, but I really do wanna put some decision, some decision space with the group that forms so that we can make decisions and try and move forward. So that's, I just wanted to provide you with that this morning since we were gonna be here anyway. So any questions on that?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
Yeah, when the burn starts, just to step back to that, if you all have any questions or you have folks show up that are concerned, please send them our way. We've actually talked about having a few folks out in the area, 'cause this is gonna be very visible from town, you will see lots of smoke. And so we're gonna have some folks out there and we would encourage, if folks are interested, if you've never seen a helicopter with a heli torch, it's pretty neat, have them engage us, we'll have a spot where we can, can have folks safely come out and observe what's going on, so.
That's great. Thanks, Adam, for coming and giving us a little briefing on all that. One of the things, I kinda feel like the Native American when I'm dealing with the government, I mean, we've not always been led down the path that we thought we were being led down. We were told we were a partner and later on down the road, we found out we were really never a partner. And you're new, you get a brand new shot at it, so let's see if we can't work together and make the whole place a lot better.
I appreciate that and that's my effort and my drive is to make sure we're all at the table and understand where we're going, so I appreciate you giving me a shot.
There you go.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Welcome home. Yeah, welcome home, no doubt. All right, next item, approve or disapprove a proclamation declaring April 2016 as Fair Housing Month. Kim, do you have anything to say? You wanna come talk? You don't have to if you don't want to. She didn't talk much.
Chairman Castor and Commissioners, I just wanna thank you for reading our proclamation this, this...
Just a second, that long. Adam, can you get the PR people's names and numbers so when we do need to make calls that Administration and Randy Villa and the Commissioners have it? I'm so sorry, Kim, for interrupting you, just something that came on top of my mind there.
No problem. I just wanna thank you for reading our proclamation. I have several members of my board of directors here for the Realtors Association, I have Misaladas, Paul Tano, Cassie Carter and Linda Middleburg, so we'll be here accepting this proclamation. Thank you.
Do you wanna read the proclamation? Do you wanna read it? Yeah, sure, please, Denisha? Sorry about that.
Denisha, if there's concerns, she can read it.
Thank you. Whereas April 11, 2016 marks the 48th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1916, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas the Silver City Regional Association of Realtors is committed to the highlight of the Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the rights to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. And whereas the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all Realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity and national origin. Now therefore, being it resolved that in the pursuant of the shared goal and responsibility of providing opportunities for all, the county commission in Grant County, New Mexico, does hereby join in the national celebration by proclaiming April 2016 as Fair Housing Month and encourages all agencies, institutions and individuals, public and private, in Silver City to abide by the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Law.
Thank you very much, Denisha.
I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the proclamation declaring April 2016 as Fair Housing Month.
Now, second that motion. There's a motion, a second to approve April 2016 as Fair Housing Month. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, see five, see nine? Motion passes. So come on up and we'll give you your proclamation. Come on up there. Can't see you, front and the lighting back, hitting holes. Next item on the agenda is a surveillance program update by our very own Margaret Bagay. Good morning, Margaret, how are you?
Good morning, Chair Castor and Commissioners, thank you for having me here. Excuse me. So today I'm gonna report on the Grant County Surveillance Program, which includes juveniles and adults. So in your packets here, Denisha, I'll give you one. In July, we only had four kids being surveillance. August, five. September, we had nine. October, we had seven. November, we had seven. In December, we had thirteen. January, we had fourteen. And last month, we had seventeen. And these numbers are given to us by the Juvenile Probation and Probate Office. So total year-to-date kids that we've surveillance through JPO has been thirty-five informal, forty formal, and the difference between that is informal is pre-adjudicated. That means they're either on the Courtesy Program, First Time Offenders Program, which is our citation program, or anything being handled informally. Formal is adjudicated, they are on a consent decree or one year to, up to two years court order probation. We had twenty-two girls and fifty-four boys, total for the year of seventy-six. Total visuals were two thousand eighty-two and attempted visuals were four hundred and fifty-seven. So total contacts were two thousand five hundred and thirty-nine with two hundred and sixty-four violations. On the GPS bracelets on their next page, in July, we had four total. In August, we had two. In September, we had six. October 6, November 5, December 6 and January 6 and February 3. Total average of days is seventy-nine point six-two. Longest duration was in October, a hundred and fifteen days, of course, we had six kids. And I know Mr. Arbison's in the audience as well as members of the JPO if they wanna add to it. Also, in terms of the, is there any questions on the juvenile stuff? Okay, I don't have the number of detainments, that's something that the program manager should have with JPO and I know she's present too, if she wants to present. Total budget is eighty thousand dollars, there's forty-five thousand allocated specifically for juveniles and the other amount is for adults. In terms of the adult referrals, on the last page, if you look FY 2015, 2016, so I, I separate them in terms of adult drug court slash district court and then magistrate referrals. So year-to-date, adult drug court referrals to the surveillance program is fifteen. Year-to-date for magistrate is eighteen. Yes, sir, those are all adults. We have thirty-three adults in the, in the surveillance program. I feel like we're moving along with the adults, especially savings of incarceration in terms of thirty-three adults that are being surveillance. We provide direct oversight to this program in terms of what the county pays for, for two juvenile male contractual services or contractors. We have two male adult surveillance officers that are contractors. Then we have one female contractor for adults. We have one state employee through the Sixth Judicial Court that provides oversight. He also provides the state vehicle, we provide equipment, breathalyzers, drug testing supplies and that's our exchange for the county paying for this service. We pay for all the lab costs because we have a contract with Redwood Toxicology and of course, oversight to the program. Are there any questions?
And we is who?
Myself.
You pay for it out of your own pocket?
No, I mean in terms of, I provide oversight, but the, the county pays for the direct contractual amount.
And you work for who?
I work for the courts, Sixth Judicial District.
Thank you, good.
Make good cookies, too.
Thanks.
Buy you off with cookies.
Any other questions?
Whatever works.
Anybody else wanna?
Margaret, would you mind explaining visuals versus attempted visuals for the commissioners?
Okay, so visuals are direct contact, we do a face-to-face contact. It may be at their workplace, maybe at their home, maybe at school. Not typically at school, but sometimes if we're told by JPO to go and do a school visit, we do, but not typically. Most of the face-to-face are after five. But we may go to the child's workplace, we may go to their, I mean, to their grandparents' house, wherever they may be. The attempted visuals are that the surveillance officer went and for whatever reason, they weren't there. And so sometimes it's a breakdown in communication, most times these kids leave without... Not typically at school, but sometimes if we're told by JPO to go and do a school visit we do, but not typically, most of the face-to-face are after five. But we may go to the child's workplace, we may go to their, I mean to their grandparents' house, wherever they may be. The attempted visuals are that the Surveillance Officer went and for whatever reason they weren't there. And so sometimes it's a breakdown in communication, most times these kids leave without telling anybody. They don't tell the probation officer, they don't tell the Surveillance Officer until we get there and then it's an attempted, we still have to pay for that visual.
Thank you very much.
The Alka wants to talk.
I do want to add that if you could consider refunding this program next year, I don't know if I have to put a memo to the county manager requesting the amount, when would you like it?
Anytime in the next week to two weeks we would need it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alka wants to.
Good morning.
Good morning. Happy Saint Patrick's Day everybody. I didn't wear green so I'm gonna get pinched here soon watch. I just wanted to add as far as detention, we've talked about this with Charlene that we are down in detention. Our current year-to-date is that we've had fifteen youth detained. Last year we had a total of twenty-five and the year before that we had seventy. So reducing it as much as possible. Charlene would probably have a more accurate count of the number of days they've been in detention. Our referrals are down and that accounts for the lower Surveillance Numbers, but it's a good thing they're down. We're down fifty percent by felonies, we're down forty-two percent by repeat offenders, so we're getting there. Did you guys have any questions that I need to answer as far as the Surveillance Report?
No, no, we got comment on the numbers that you just gave, that means the savings to the taxpayers are huge amount of money.
Yes, we're doing our best, I'm gonna work myself out of a job soon.
Don't worry.
But year-to-date we've had fifty-two delinquent referrals and that's through January, and you take into consideration that last year we had two hundred and sixty-three for the whole year, so we're really down. But it's a good thing and we're also up with non-delinquent referrals, which means we're working more on truancies, on courtesies, on runaways, on the kids who aren't criminal kids but they need services.
There's several more groups that are over incarcerated that we probably need to start working on these type of programs for, so we're not gonna let you work yourself out of a job.
Well I hope not, I don't want to be on furlough or anything.
We'll find another one for you.
Okay, then any other questions I can answer, I can give more detailed reports on?
No, I was really excited and proud, the presentation that was given at KJ State Meeting here in Silver City this last month and it made me be proud to be a part of it and so, thank you very much, good job.
Oh, thank you guys for coming out and it was a good showing, we got our grant approved thanks to Charlene and you guys for supporting us to be in our fiscal region. So we've got a great increase, I think we got about ninety-seven thousand dollars, so about thirty thousand more increase over last year. And that'll fund our JPO school and our community building with their state lead and also strengthening down this program.
Which says something, a lot of agencies were cut.
Yeah, just they were, yeah. So, okay, I just wanted to add that quick there and I'll give some more data to Charlene if you guys have anything else.
Okay, I'll give you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove the reappointment of Becky O'Connor. Can we do those together? Any reason we can't do those together? Let's go ahead and approve or disapprove Becky O'Connor and John Rohovick to the Grant County Lodgers Tax Advisory Board.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. I don't make many motions, it's kind of odd. Okay, there's a motion, a second to approve Becky O'Connor and John Rohovick to the Grant County Lodgers Tax Advisory Board, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye. Aye, motion passes. Moving to item J, approve or disapprove the PERA Qualification Record Form for the following volunteer fire departments, Cliffhela, Fort Baird, Lower Members, Santa Rita, Sapien Creek, Tyrone, Upper Members, and Whiskey Creek.
Motion to approve the PERA Qualification Record Form for the following volunteer fire departments as stated by the Chair.
I second that motion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, approve or disapprove PERA Annual Reporting Form for the following volunteer fire departments, Cliffhela, Fort Baird, Lower Members, Santa Rita, Sapien Creek, Tyrone, Upper Members, and Whiskey Creek.
Motion to approve the PERA Annual Reporting Form for volunteer fire departments as stated by the Chair.
There's a motion and I'll second it, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the Law Enforcement Protection Fund application for the July first, 2016 through June thirtieth, 2017 fiscal year? Did I skip?
Motion.
What did I skip?
Well we both, we.
Yes I did.
Yeah, we did J and K.
No, no I did J and K separately. Okay, I do that once in a while myself Mary Alice. Okay, so we'll go back to where we were, where were we?
Law enforcement protection fund.
Okay, did you make that motion?
I have a chat, I will though, I had motion to approve the Law Enforcement Protection Fund application for July one, 2016 through June the thirtieth of 2017 fiscal year.
And I'll second that motion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna skip M because I don't see the Cliff High School boy, can somebody make sure they're not outside? Thanks Row. Okay, we'll hang a look. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to contracts and agreements. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1610, grant award agreement between the New Mexico Energy and Minerals and Natural Resources Department and the County of Grant for the Tyrone Fire Department.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1610.
I second that motion, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1612, memorandum of agreement between the Village of Santa Clara and the County of Grant regarding the use of real property also known as the Senior Citizens Center.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1612.
So motion to approve and I'll second it, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A-1613, a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Silver City and the County of Grant.
County.
Yeah. How'd we miss that on Tuesday? Regarding the use of real property also known as the Silver City Senior Center.
Motion to approve Agreement A-1613.
There's a motion and I'll second it, to approve A-1613, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Bids. Item Q. Shocked Earl didn't hear, he's so happy. Approve or disapprove bid IFBB-1512, Grand Kenny Road Department, hydrostatically driven front-wheel drive self-propelled chip spreader.
Boy that's a motion.
Just say chip spreader.
Motion to approve bid IFBB-1512 to Sierra Machinery Inc.
There's a motion, a second to, I second it, there's a motion, a second to approve IFBB-1512 to Sierra Machinery Inc. for a chip spreader, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions. Resolution, approve or disapprove R-1613, that's the 2016 certified mileage. Earl went over that on a Tuesday for us. Total is six hundred and ninety-four point eight-three miles. Oh there it is, okay.
Motion to approve Resolution R-1613, 2016 certified mileage.
There's a motion and I'll second it, to approve R-1613, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R-1615, a resolution establishing the Grant County Detention Center Oversight. Did I miss one? What's that?
S.
S, I missed S?
Uh huh.
I'm sorry, I missed S. Approve or disapprove, see, Mary Alice would have caught me up there. Well we're out of sync, I'm normally having to do all this much work.
Approve or disapprove Resolution R-1614, authorizing the execution and delivery of the loan agreement and intercept agreement between Grant County, New Mexico, and the New Mexico Finance Authority to pay a principal amount of five hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and three for the purpose of financing the cost of planning, designing, constructing a new fire station for the Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department. Motion to approve Resolution R-1614 as stated by the Chair.
There's a motion and I'll second it, to approve R-1614, any discussion on that motion? I just want to say five years ago when I started trying to get this fire department, I never believed it would take this long, but with having to acquire land and through Freeport and all the other hoops we had to jump through, I'm glad this day is finally here. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
No? Okay. Item T. Approve or disapprove Resolution R-1615, a resolution establishing the Grant County Detention Center Oversight Committee. I know you want to talk, so I'm gonna let you.
Thank you Chairman Caston, Commissioner Hall, and all of the hard-working county staff here. I'm Bill Hudson, the current president of the Southwestern Chapter of the ACLU of New Mexico. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss the proposed Resolution R-1615 to establish a Grant County Detention Center Oversight Committee. I would be, I would personally like to say, it did come as somewhat a surprise that our draft resolution was placed on the agenda. During my presentation to the Commission in July of 2015, I requested that we work together in order to develop such a resolution, and after several months passed with no indication the resolution was being drafted, it was decided by our board that we would take the initiative and make the original draft. After receiving input from a number of members, we sent our draft to the county manager, the county attorney, the Detention Center Administrator in Grant County and in Luna County because we also do monitoring down there, asking for input. Mr. Elwell in Luna County was the only response. After waiting for some time, we inquired of the affiliate office in Albuquerque if we could send redacted copies of our visitation reports to the Commissioners as well as a draft of our resolution, and once again requesting input from the county. I believe that about three weeks ago you each should have received those copies. Two weeks later, with absolutely no notification, we were, as I stated earlier, surprised to find it on the agenda. During your work session this past Tuesday, Ms. Webb, the county manager, commented on the good rapport that has developed with the ACLU chapter through numerous meetings. I would state, I would state that we have a very cordial relationship, but the lack of communication will not indicate a good rapport. In actuality, I've had one meeting with Ms. Webb and Ms. Robinson jointly last July prior to coming before you. I've had one other meeting with Ms. Robinson in July of 2014, during that time she was the acting county manager as well as the county attorney. That meeting was on the subject of unconstitutional use of the Silver City Senior Center, which she was obviously unaware of, once being alerted to the problem, it was rectified within a couple of days, and we commend her for that. We unfortunately cannot say the same regarding the ongoing problems with the Detention Center. Despite what we felt at the time was a productive meeting last July, at which both Ms. Webb and Ms. Robinson agreed there were a number of unsatisfactory conditions at the Detention Center, little has been done to correct them. One issue at that time was the lack of adequate medical care and the continuing denial of proper medications. We had at that time only recently resolved a situation whereupon a detainee had been denied medical treatment for nearly four months. He had been transported to the Hila Regional Emergency Room in March with severe mouth pain, the emergency room physician informed the Detention Center there was nothing they were able to do, he should see an oral surgeon as soon as possible. The cyst causing pain continued over several weeks with no treatment other than acetaminophen, Tylenol, when he was able to get it. He contacted us after eleven weeks and our local chapter inquired about it, we were informed there was nothing the Detention Center could do. They had requested he be furloughed in order to have it cared for, but the court had denied his furlough. He would have to wait until he had completed his sentence. We contacted the affiliate office of ACLU, New Mexico, in Albuquerque and following the brief investigation, they sent a demand letter to the Detention Center and a tort claims notice to the county, after which the surgery was immediately done. If it was possible to have the surgery in July, it was possible to have it done in March. As a footnote, the demand letter was, to the Detention Center was returned by the post office because it was sent to the only address they could find on the internet, mailing information for the Detention Center was lacking in the county website and by the way still is. We often receive complaints from detainees, they are unable to get their prescribed medication, in one instance due to substitute being given as opposed to the one prescribed by physicians, an individual was taken to the emergency room with cardiac problems. We also have been informed by the District Attorney's Office that there have been numerous occasions when that office has had to advise the Detention Center Administration to provide prescribed medications. Failure to do so leaves the county open to serious legal liability. We've also been questioned by Matthew Elwell, the Luna County Detention Administrator about the Grant County Detention Center's strict non-narcotic policy. He stated that the Detention Center Administrator should not have a veto over physicians' prescriptions. And I can't get the pages part. Those are examples of the most pressing need for oversight regarding only the medical availability. There are problems involving the unequal treatment of women at the facility, they do not have the equal opportunity for classes or trustee status as male detainees, there are reports to us of denial of access to the law library, there have been reports of legal mail being opened and of mail submitted to the courts by detainees at the Detention Center never arriving. Ms. Webb made the statement during the work session on Tuesday, the Detention Center is already under the strict oversight of the New Mexico Association of Counties. That organization does indeed have very extensive voluntary accreditation procedures. The Grant County Detention Center is not accredited by that body, has not applied for accreditation, and from what we know of the requirements, is not ever likely to be accredited due to the cost involved in meeting the mandated minimal standards. As I stated, or as I understand it, Mr. Correo did utilize some of those standards and suggested procedures in his efforts to develop the recently updated inmate orientation booklet. This is a great improvement. The booklet however does not include much of the information required by the NMAC standards. For example, the booklet does not include an explanation of fees, charges, and copayments that may apply, a description of services, programs, and eligibility requirements, and information on how to access medical and mental health care, identification of available pre-trial release options or mental health treatment and counseling options, just to mention a few. I'm unsure if this new manual has even been translated into Spanish as it should be. We are unaware if the staff has been provided with the Code of Ethics Manual and provided that training. In actuality, there's quite a bit of information the local ACLU chapter does not have access to and probably should not have access to. There should be a body with the authority however to look at the internal record-keeping, to monitor the compliance with written policies, to examine personnel files, to look at ways in which the Detention Center can come closer to meeting standards set forth by the New Mexico Association of Counties. We are aware of the state- We are aware of the state-mandated annual visitation by the commission that you're going to be taking part in later today. That is a form of oversight, but you're surely aware of the limitations of that brief tour. It is undertaken without the expertise of people in the fields of behavior, health, medicine, prosecutorial, or criminal defense law. All of the information you will receive is from a single perspective of the detention center administrator, which is not bad, it's just limited. Whether during your annual tour or your monthly reports, you are better served if you receive a variety of viewpoints from a variety of people, all working to improve the operation of the detention center, possibly making it operate more efficiently and possibly preventing costly claims against the county. It's been my experience, when making decisions, it's best to get as much information as possible, and I think you would agree. So we urge you to approve the Resolution R1516, creating the Grant County Detention Center Oversight Committee. Thank you.
No.
I would like to make a motion at this time to disapprove Resolution R1615, the resolution establishing Grant County Detention Center Oversight Committee.
And I'll second that motion. There's a motion to disapprove R1615. Further discussion on that motion?
The other discussion I have is that in going to the state meetings and going to many of those meetings with NMAC and such, I... it's my feeling that in fact oversight is already in place.
I want to say a couple things also. The redacted documents that I received, and I appreciate you sending those to me, Mr. Hudson, I did go over those with a fine-tooth comb. I felt as though they were the exact same ones that you talked about in July. I met with administration, I feel as though all of those items have been dealt with. Some of those items are out of our control. I did not see where this would address those situations, and there's entirely too many "shall's" that put the commission in a position to where a committee is running the commission rather than the commission running a committee, and that's why I second this motion. So at this time, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R1616, the budget adjustment. Did you want Linda to go over those?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have a resolution with several budget adjustments. The first adjustment being a temporary cash transfer from the general fund into the airport for $50,000. We have intra-budget transfer in expenses in the public works department from grounds, maintenance, and improvements, decreasing it by $2,250, and increasing training line item by $250, and increasing the supplies and tools line item by $2,000. We also have an intra-budget transfer in the reappraisal program. We have $7,000 decrease in capital outlay and transferring it into the non-capital equipment. We have one in the Whiskey Creek Fire Department, we're decreasing supplies and tools by $2,000 and increasing schools and conventions by the $2,000. We have an increase in revenue and expenses for the airport lighting system, and this is a grant. The revenue increase is $13,500, the expense increase is $15,000, and we have a cash transfer from the airport in the amount of $1,500. We have an increase in revenue and in expenses for Tyrone Fire Protection Grant, and this is to purchase a fire truck in the amount of $100,000. We have an increase in expenses for the DWI Cuare Cantinas in the amount of $5,895. And we have an increase in revenue and expenses for the Rosedale Road Colonia, that is in the amount of $692,133. And we have an increase in expenses at the airport fund for fuel in the amount of $25,000. So the total revenue increase is $805,633, and the total increase for expenses is $838,028. And the rest are just transfers that wash each other out.
Motion to approve that Resolution R1616, the budget adjustments.
I'll second the budget adjustments, R1616. Is there any discussion on those budget adjustments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R1617, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement by and between Grant County, New Mexico, and the New Mexico Finance Authority in the amount of $115,513 for the purpose of financing, purchasing, of construction material for a road improvement project in the Loma Verde Estates Subdivision. That's been a long time.
Moving along. Yeah, it is. Motion to approve Resolution R1617 as stated by the Chair.
And I'll second that motion. There's a motion, I'll second to approve Resolution R1617. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. I guess this time we're going to recess. I'll take a motion to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
All those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Call the order, the Grant County Indigent Health Plan Claims Board. We have one item on the agenda for the Claims Board. Approve or disapprove the Health Plan Claims, the old Indigent Fund for February 29th, 2016, and that amount is $34,194.81.
Motion to approve the Health Plan Claims for February 29th, 2016.
Second that motion. All those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent and Health Plan Claims Board?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. Call back to order, the Board of County Commissioners. We'll stand for Commissioner Reports. Do you want to recess and see if the boys show up?
Yeah, we can. Do the reports and see if they show up. The... Charlie was saying they may get here by, what, 10:15?
They told Denise they had a test this morning. They were leaving.
Just drove up.
All right, let's recess till they get in. We won't waste any TV time.
Do this?
Yep. That's fine.
Do the report?
Yep.
From my reports, we've had numerous, several, two Casa meetings with my group and others. We also had a meeting with the county manager, Tukasa, and HMS, with their whole board, which was about a three-hour meeting or longer. Yes, I guess it was from about 9:00 to about 4:00 in the afternoon. I also attended a town council meeting and reception and afterwards for the outgoing Mayor Maronis, which was nice. Attended a dispatch meeting, attended a state board meeting for J-Jack, which was reported on earlier, at the Volunteer Center here in Silver City. It was really interesting, and they gave a presentation on how the youth and some of the work that they've done there at the Volunteer Center and around the communities. Also attended the First National Bank reception for Mike Martinez, who has gone to be retired, and also attended the...
Mike Martinez.
On the hard for a hill. I apologize. Thank you. Also attended the DARE Program graduation sponsored by the Grant County Sheriff's Office for the 5th grade in Cliff, which was quite interesting, and I talked about that at the work session about the young men that gave that a... he won the essay contest, and it was quite thorough and quite interesting. So we're in good hands coming up. That's all I got.
Okay. So let's go ahead and do a recess and we'll...
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, signify, say aye. Motion passes. We'll wait for the kids to get in. Call back to order, the Grant County County Commission. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing the Cliff High School boys for their state championship basketball team. Is Denise gone?
Denise's gone.
Huh? Oh, she went to the bathroom? Yeah, go ahead and read it. Hear from Cliff.
They'll understand it if you read it.
Whereas the governing body of the County of Grant, having learned of the accomplishments... Nope, I can't read it. The Cliff High School basketball team does hereby extend its recognition. And whereas the Cliff High School Cowboys of the Silver Consolidated School District in Cliff, New Mexico, earned the state championship in the Class A category of the 2016 New Mexico Activities Association State Basketball Tournament held in Albuquerque, New Mexico on March 12th, 2016. And whereas the Cliff High School Cowboys outscored Springer by a score of 56 to 45 to earn them their 12th state championship. And whereas the players and coaches of the Cliff High School basketball team are to be commended for their good sportsmanship, teamwork, character, and commitment to excellence. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the County of Grant that congratulations and recognition is extended to the Cliff High School Cowboys for their outstanding athletic accomplishments.
Thanks, Charlie. So can I get a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved that the Cliff Cowboys are the state champs and continue to be the state champs and looking for another state championship next year.
And I proudly second that motion. All those in favor, signify, say aye.
Amen.
Aye. Motion passes. Can we get our picture with you guys? You guys be alright, y'all?
You have to kiss any rings or anything, or we all right?
Where you want it, Seth?
We're gonna have to pop your line up right here.
Where you going?
I don't know.
Tall guy, something like that. We'll go. I can get the...
Tall guys on the back.
Just like in front of you.
That's right. They don't have me.
My question is, what do these guys...
These guys have a horn?
Horn? You got horn bit?
She's a bit horned.
Do you get it?
Okay.
You want to get it?
Right there.
Right here.
You want to give it something?
Yeah.
Maybe you want me to give this to you?
Here's yours.
Glad we could wait for you guys. Thank you. Can you get back this stuff?
So, at this time, we're going to recess and reconvene at the Grant County Detention Facility for our annual tour. Can I get a motion to second? All those in favor, signify, say aye. We will adjourn from the detention center.